I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to remind the community, there's a new procedure now for calling in to make a comment during a public meeting of this particular meeting. You may call us at 412-851-6911. That number is also on our website, under the Board part of the website. You can also still publicly comment on the form that is available there also by clicking on the link. The queue for the phone calls, there are five, and as soon as it fills up with five, then after the first one is called, another one can be added in and so forth and so on. But the limit at the beginning is five for commenting. When you are on the phone, please state your name, home address, and it'll prompt you to give a brief comment about what you're talking about.
Yes.
And then, the other thing is that I know a lot of you watch us on the Facebook livestream, but I also highly encourage you to access Board Docs, which is also available to you, so you can actually follow along with the agenda. And in the agenda, there are items that are in that agenda that you can access to provide you with more information. So if you're just someone who likes to watch the Facebook stream, I also encourage you to please go to the website and access the Board Docs, because I think that that would help you in understanding and in watching, understanding what's going on in the meeting. Okay. Mr. McCoslin, would you please take role?
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modra.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza.
Present.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mrs. Dobos.
Here.
All nine members present.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a book presentation to Mr. Joseph Consolmagna, if you'll please come up. Mr. Consolmagna has been our Nutrition Food Services Director for many years. In the fall, he lost his beloved mother, Rose Consolmagna, and we would like to dedicate a book in her memory to the Ben Franklin School Library. Rose's 91 years of life were filled with the love of family and friends. She was married 47 years to her one and only Angelo, who passed away in 1997. Her love embraced her daughter, Joanne, her son, Joe, along with five grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. In addition to family, Rose's friends were treasured as lifelong friendships. If ever a friend needed anything, Rose would be there to offer love and support. Joe got his hospitality background from his mother, as she and Angelo always hosted holidays, birthdays, and all good-time occasions where no outside catered food was ever served. Neighbors and friends alike enjoyed her fresh-baked homemade bread, homemade cheese raviolis, and her creamy chocolate fudge. Rose was also extremely independent. Up until 89 years of age, she cleaned her house, mowed her own grass, and shoveled the snow from her own driveway. You can see this independent spirit in the story that Joe shared. A couple of years ago, after a recent snowfall, Joe asked her, "Who shoveled the driveway?" Well, she didn't answer. When questioned again, she said, "I don't know." When Joe commented, "Why are your wet boots in the laundry tub?", Rose said, "I guess I'll have to hide them the next time," which is a good demonstration of her independent spirit. That was his mom, who will be missed, but she had a great, healthy life of 91 wonderful years that she enjoyed with family, friends, and relatives. To honor Rose's love of baking, the book we are donating was recommended by Amy Ivan Nusick, the librarian at Ben Franklin and Mrs. Dumont. It's called "The Complete Baking Book for Young Chefs: 100 Sweet and Savory Recipes That You'll Love to Bake, Share, and Eat." And I believe Mrs. Dumont wanted to say something also.
Yes, and this is Janet O'Rourke. I'm going to speak on behalf of Mrs. Dumont. She was unable to come this evening. She says, "It will be a great honor to add this book to our Franklin School Library in memory of Joe's mother, Rose. This is a wonderful way for our students to explore a new subject area. Maybe they will be able to perfect making fudge like Rose did. I must say, I've successfully made fudge once in my life. I've received easy, no-fail recipes from friends and to no avail was not able to make it. I gave up on making fudge a while back. Thank you, Joe, for choosing Franklin to house this special book. This makes me want to give making fudge another try."
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to thank everyone. I mean, she would have been humbled. It's an honor to have the book in the Ben Franklin Library where my two children attended, and it'll be special. But thank you, it's an honor to be here tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll give it to the Ben Franklin. Hey, I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda items for our business meeting.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Nagel, seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. All in favor? Mr. McCoslin, will you put up the...
Voting is open. Motion carries.
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meetings of 12-820 and 12-2920. So moved. Moved by Ms. Turner Walsh, Walsh Turner, and seconded by Mr. Christensen.
Voting is open. Mr. Scalzo, oh, there you go. Motion carries.
I'd like to announce executive sessions on December 29, 2020, January 5, 2021, January 19, 2021, and January 26, 2021, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. At this time, we have some reports. Student Government Representative, Mr. Zelt, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hello, everybody. At the moment, SGA's operations are primarily focused on our preparation and planning for the Spirit and Wish Week that are upcoming. And as you may know, we're spending a lot of time trying to reformat and adapt this event to the virtual nature of our schooling at the moment. And we've gotten some great ideas from our student body representatives. We've been busy with meetings over the past couple of weeks, and we think we're going to have a good Wish Week and Spirit Week this year in spite of being digital. And as always, we're really glad to give back to the school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zelt. Appreciate your report. We also have a report from the PTA/PTO Council. Christine De Pasquale, are you on?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. This is Abraham Lincoln. The PTO at Abraham Lincoln wrapped up December by giving gift cards to the staff to show their appreciation for all they do to keep the school up and running. From nurses, custodian staff, the security officer, instructional aides, and the amazing secretary, it is important to show gratitude for all they do, day in and day out. In mid-January, they held a Bethel Park Spirit Day. They encouraged students to show their Bethel Park pride and send pictures to post on social media and include in their yearbook. Whether on screen or in the classroom, it is important we all feel connected. They were unable to hold our annual bowling party on Martin Luther King Jr. Day due to COVID. High hopes we get to it next year. On January 20, they held a Spirit Day at Chick-fil-A. When you mentioned Lincoln ordering, Chick-fil-A generously donated a portion of the proceeds to the PTO. Continuous fundraisers include Market Day, Sarah's Candy, Amazon Smile, and Box Tops. Ben Franklin. Ben Franklin Elementary is having a Spirit Week to brighten the month of January. This includes Creative Day, Disney Day, Crazy Hair Day, Decades Day, and Move It Day. Students are encouraged to participate whether in-person or virtual. Next month, they will be doing their annual Read-a-Thon. Unlike previous years, this year won't be fundraiser but for fun. Students will fill out bookmarks and pick a prize to be put into a drawing for prizes. Prizes will be from all local places that have donated in the past to help support their businesses. George Washington. George Washington is currently running a bundt cake fundraiser from nothing but bunt. The Yearbook Committee continues to offer daily photo opportunities to help build a yearbook for the students this year, currently preparing for some type of Valentine celebration that adheres to new limitations. Neil Armstrong. Once again, not a lot to report at NAMS. They held a board meeting to prepare for upcoming changes in the rest of the year. They plan to have a Zoom meeting open to all in February. They just held a surprise coffee hot cocoa bar for the staff last weekend just to say thank you. The Spirit Ware Sale is underway now, and they are exploring virtual field trips and assembly options for the school as well. Independence Middle School. January 11 was Welcome Back Teacher Breakfast. Donuts, bagels, and coffee were set up in the 18 pods in order to be COVID-friendly. Bold and Gold 8th Grade Program has been postponed due to COVID. This year, the Bold and Gold Program will be held virtually in the spring. And that's all with that report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you for all that the PTA/PTO is doing during these difficult times.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Solicitor report?
I just have a brief few things that I wanted to say. I had given the Board pertinent updates and information during the executive session, but it is January, and I wanted to take a brief moment to thank the school board for all that you have done this year. It's Board Member Appreciation Month. I don't want to steal Dr. DiImperio's thunder, but I've appreciated working with you over the past almost a year now. I have nothing but great respect for all of you. I think that you've done really important things this year. You've hired a superintendent. You've led through a global pandemic, and you need to pat yourselves on the back for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. DiImperio.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Dobus, Madam President. I do have two items, too, and to pick up where our solicitor left off. January is Board Appreciation Month, and I've worked with a lot of very hard-working boards, and I certainly wouldn't want to diminish that. But having worked here in Bethel now for almost a year and seen with this Board of School Directors have had to address and deal with, sometimes almost on a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week basis, I can't tell you how much respect I have for you. We do have from the Pennsylvania School Boards Association a certificate for each Board of School Director thanking you for your service. And I will point out that Pennsylvania is one of the few states in the United States where school service or school director's service is strictly public service. There is no payment, there's no remuneration, or any type of benefits that go to school directors. It's simply their way of honoring and serving the community in which they live. And I think the Bethel Board, especially through this very, very difficult COVID year, has just done a remarkable job, and certainly, Mrs. Dobus, under your leadership, it's been very good. We did provide each Board Member with what we thought was appropriate, given the pandemic, hand soap and sanitizer, so that you can continue to be safe and serve the district. And again, thank you, each one of you, very, very much. And this is actually Mr. McGregor, who couldn't be here. So, Mr. McGregor, I will save this for you as well as your honor certificate, and we will get this to you. So again, I thank you.
I just want the hand sanitizer.
Okay. And I did have one other thing, talking about issues. Obviously, on all our communities' minds are the issue of are we returning to school? Currently, we're in that hybrid A/B model, and the District Administration, along with the staff, is working very hard to try to return students as quickly as possible to school. Our goal is to try to change this present model that we have into a return to school in February. Date to be determined, but some of the issues, it's not as easy as some may think. We do have to look at positivity of COVID rate spread or distribution in both Bethel Park and the school district. We have to examine our abilities to continue to staff our buildings. We have to work with our teacher agreements to be sure that we have an agreement with them on what is workable. And of course, right now, we're looking at the availability of the COVID distribution. But know that we're working very closely with the school directors to find a solution to return children as quickly as possible. And we do understand that in-person school is where kids really belong and where they thrive. Again, the decision on returning is not an easy one, but we're going to work very hard to make it happen, and our goal is to try to make that happen on a larger scale in February. But right now, we are in on the A/B hybrid model. We'd like to expand that, so thank you, Mrs. D.
Could we have Dr. Jen Sannie tell us what the positivity rates are?
Yes, Dr. Jen Sannie.
Thank you, Mrs. Dobus and Dr. DiImperio. There's two positivity rates that we consider, and it has to do with the average of the seven days, the last seven days. Right now, for Allegheny County, the positivity rate has gone from 16.75% to 14.5%. So it's gone down slightly. On the other hand, Bethel Park, the community itself, either we're really, really good at knowing when we're ill and we go get tested, but it's around one out of every two folks that are getting tested are positive. That rate is hovering around 45.93. So that's not good news, but that's where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we are going to be reading some public comments and also listening to some. We have four comments that have come in on the response form. The first one is from Joe in Bethany Block at 811 Red Barn Road in Bethel Park. And the comment is, "We have three children ages five and younger who we plan on sending to the district schools. We urge the Board to strongly consider implementation of a full-day kindergarten as part of the forthcoming strategic plan. Also, we would like to be involved as stakeholders as part of the input process when planning advances to that point. Thank you for listening and wishing you good health." The next comment is from Chris Jones at 239 Drake Road. "Why are there two-hour delays on days with live instruction? Why don't they handle those on Fridays when they are asynchronous and the teachers are off?"
I think the other two were for the end of the meeting, but is there a reason why we should wait?
I'm just going to read them. Did you get them? Oh, did you get them?
Yeah, we did get them.
I was able to get in now.
Yeah, I just found them.
Okay, go ahead. You want to read Nathan Graff's?
Yes. The next one is from Nathan Graff, 1060 Siri Wood Road. And the comments are, "My name is Nathan Graff. I have three children in Bethel Park School System. Up until this year, I had been happy with my children's education. This year's been a total disaster. Remote learning has not only been terrible for my children's education, it has also been depressing for them. As you probably know, many kids are committing suicide across the country because of lack of social interaction they are getting from school. In fact, a teenager from my church did just that a few weeks ago for this reason, according to his mother. I hope that you all realize the risks you are taking with kids' lives by not letting them in school. Study after study has shown low transmission in schools and low impact from the virus to children. This is why schools all over Allegheny County are offering four or five days of in-person education. Why is it that we still do not have a plan for allowing our kids to go back in person four or five days a week? Since the beginning of the year, the Board has been saying that their goal was to get us back to in-person schooling, yet we are still only doing two days per week. We have the following Allegheny County... Why have the following Allegheny County schools been able to offer four or five days in-person education to their elementary school kids? And in many cases, also offered this to their middle school and high school kids, but we have not been able to. Catholic schools, Hillcrest, Upper St. Clair, Baldwin White Hill, North Allegheny, Fox Chapel, McKeesport, West Allegheny, West Jefferson, Elizabeth Forward, Sharters Valley, Hampton Moon, and Carlington. South Park starts February 1st. I can draw no other conclusion than our Board has not, in reality, made it a priority to get our kids back in school. Unless the Board offers more in-person education very soon, I will also come to the conclusion that Bethel Park is simply a terrible school district for my kids to be in, or at least until most of the Board can get voted out. I may not stick around for that long."
Let me take the last one? Sure. Ken Crowley, 2020 Millennium Court. "Good evening. I am writing to follow up on my comments from last week's meeting. The data research and the state recommendations continue to validate and support the full return of elementary students to in-person instruction. While our neighboring districts have already implemented successful, full in-person return at elementary level, our district continues to sit idle by and has not communicated nor has any clear timeline of its next steps or taken steps to begin to plan for full in-person return for elementary students. In fact, a revised health and safety plan is not even on tonight's agenda, which sadly means we're at least two to three weeks, if not more, removed from potential plan. This is a shame for our elementary students, and the district needs to begin to take the steps to ensure the return as soon as possible. I realize there are many potential roadblocks to this plan, but it is time for the district administrators to get creative with their resources and spacing to make it a reality. If their peers can do it, they can do it too. Thank you." Okay. Oh, wow, okay. So we will take public comments again at the end of the meeting. If you would like to use the phone number to call in, it's 412-851-6911. Okay, Mr. Nagel, will you take all of the consent agendas, please?
Yes, there are, hold on, where'd it go? There are 13 items on the consent agenda. Approval of extra-duty responsibility program, acceptance of resignations, approval of COVID-19 compensatory services program, change of assignment, appointment of personnel, December 2020 and January 2021 salaries and bills, November 2020 financial report, December 2020 financial report, budgetary transfers, approval of student service contracts, items declared unused and unnecessary, purchase of the Vector Solutions Exceptional Child Course Library, and purchase of cargo vans. I move that these 13 items be approved.
I need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Christensen. Any comments or questions about any of these 13 items?
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Scalzo, these two need to be taken separately. And I have, we can entertain questions about both of them since they've been sort of new.
We'll start under Curriculum Committee. First item that we're looking at is High School Course Selection Guide, so we'll begin with that if anyone has any comments.
We got the summary. Just for the public, is somebody able to explain the merger of the English courses?
Hello, Joe Valani here. I'm able to explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Valani.
No problem. With the Course Selection Guide, there were a number of changes, nothing major. One significant change, as just brought up in that question, we were offering World Literature and then Writing for the Humanities and Writing for the Sciences. Essentially, we're taking those two curriculums. They were both condensed in semester formats with writing half a year and reading half a year. In an interest for our students to make that a full-year English course that's reflective of all other levels and grades at the high school, in addition, looking at practices and discussing with the English Department, the ability to write throughout the year was beneficial to our students in looking at that both in MLA and APA format. So the decision was made with the facilitators and the department to take those two curriculums that kids took next to each other and just merge it into a single class under a new name. So it's not really changing the instruction, it's just the delivery and the timeframe of the instruction that's being delivered into a single course versus two semester courses.
Mr. Valani, as I understand it, they also have taken the remedial class and split that into two so that writing skills can be accommodated as a semester remedial?
Yeah, so much. We do have another English course for students with different pathways, options, or maybe struggling as writers. Prior, we had an English 12 course that covered a lot of the reading components. With that, we felt it was necessary to have a writing skills class. This is a practical, real-life writing class that's offered. So mimicking the previous style of that, because this is a Level 1 class, we felt it was necessary to have a writing component incorporated in there. So that merged and separated from a one-year class to a two-semester course. So that merged and separated from a one-year class to a two-semester course. Once again, still trying to achieve the same objective of having that reading and writing component for all students in all English levels.
I was, I was also wondering about the Science and Art course. Is that still two periods or has it been moved into one period?
No, it is still two. The only clarification point in the document posted on the website is it's still two credits and part of that class is a term that we did a few years back. It's one science credit, it's one art credit where they explore both areas and how they cross-curricular combine. It is still a two-credit class, and it's a consecutive period that's taken in sequence during the school day.
Okay, the reason I asked is that that was redlined out, so I just wanted to bring that up. Also, the career component that is required by the state, where are those, where are those fulfilled?
Sure. So in the Course Selection Guide, you'll see on page ten is our CEWs. It's Career Education Work Strands. Two years back, we readjusted those. So we, at the high school, are responsible for completing eight strands. Every student has to do it by the completion at a junior year. In those strands, it has to do with career acquisition, exploration, entrepreneurship. So what we did a couple of years ago is we integrated those CEWs into a number of activities. We do some with our Steel Center Exploration in freshman year. We do some through our ASVABs and our Career Exploration through our activity periods. In addition to that, we then embedded some of it into our curricular pieces. So when students take a health course, they use the Everfy software for some of their lessons. They do a financial math in that class at that time. In our Social Studies History classes, they do an entrepreneur Socratic Seminar activity. And in our English classes in junior year, they do a resume and some other career acquisition docs. So we've tried to embed that in there and trying to achieve eight. We actually go over eight, but we do have to hit each student with each strand by that. So they are embedded in our courses throughout ninth, tenth, eleventh grade, and we have a series of activities that we complete both in homerooms independently through NAVYOTS, our College Exploration Program, and then just in some of our classes.
Anyone else have questions?
Yes, Mr. Valani, I would like to thank you, the, the Social Studies staff and our administration for bringing to my attention the new course, The Struggle, Successes, and Leadership. I know you guys all worked hard to make sure this was in this Course Selection Guide, and I'm glad you guys brought this to my attention. And for the board's, Board and the public's information, this is something that they initiated, just brought the Diversity and Inclusion Committee's attention to try to get in, take a step forward in some of the teaching and the educational aspect, curricular aspect of diversity and inclusion. And I just wanna applaud you, the Social Studies staff and the administration for that.
I appreciate it. We're very excited about that course. It's gonna be a semester-long course available to all students, nine to twelve, through our history department, and we're very excited for that offer and an opportunity. We think students will really like it.
Are there any more comments, questions? I'd like to move Item One, High School Course Selection Guide.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Christensen.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Okay, Item Two, Agreement with the World of Learning Institute.
Could you please actually read that, that whole item there? Thank you.
The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to contract with the World of Learning Institute to provide online instruction for all Latin courses for the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year, or at such time a person is hired, whichever is less, at a cost not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars.
I need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spakusa. Any questions and comments?
I do have a couple of questions. Actually, it's directed to Dr. Demperio. I just would like you to, you know, publicly comment and let the public know that we are, that there's a guarantee, that we're gonna guarantee that we are trying every, in every which way, to hire a new Bethel Park Latin-certified teacher as soon as possible, that that is the full intent, not, not to just, all of a sudden, just change it over to an online program.
Yes, that's exactly right. The school district is looking extensively for what we would call the appropriate candidate to fit within the-
Can you turn your microphone on, please?
Sorry, sorry. To fit within the structure of our curriculum, there are no plans at this present time to discontinue the Latin program. And one of the reasons that we stated this agenda item the way that we did is we're only contracting this until such time we can find a permanent teacher to fill that, that particular void that was created with the retirement. There were several other options that the district did not consider, such as involuntarily transferring other teachers to make the transition as smooth as possible. We're working very hard to replace that person, and that is the full intent at this present time, not to discontinue the Latin program. So I can assure you of that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a, I have a question. You know, the Latin teacher that we're using this for, these students are going to be taught by a live instructor. How are we dealing with the students in the classroom? Are we having to pay for a substitute and/or coverage during those four or five classes a day?
Well, I'll let, I'll let Dr. O'Rourke respond to that. But typically, typically what we do in those situations is have an instructor in, in the classroom, because the students, of course, do have to be monitored if they're in the classroom. And Dr. O'Rourke, you may wish to-
That's correct, Dr. Demperio and Mrs. Turner. There will be a substitute teacher that will also be in the classroom to help the students in any way that they possibly can during the live instruction, as well as the opposite times in which they may be in the classroom without being online. So the kids will log in during their classes two times a week. The three times, even if it's their A or B day that they're in the building, there will be an adult in the classroom as well to help facilitate if possible.
And that's part of the twenty-five thousand dollars?
That is, mhm. No, the substitute is, is an additional cost.
Okay, do we have a substitute lined up, or is the high school going to have to find coverage?
There is a substitute. Mr. Valani could speak to that, but there has been a substitute in the classroom.
Mr. Valani, I know this started today.
Yeah, with the situation in that specific one, we have a series, we have four building subs at the high school, so we're able to fill with that. You know, substitute have been, substitute teachers have been a challenge just because of the shortage over the state of Pennsylvania and not exclusive to Bethel Park. So, you know, we will have a substitute teacher. Unfortunately, if we had a certified Latin substitute teacher, we would have that person in there, or we'd be exploring hiring options. If we aren't able to fill any position any day with a substitute teacher, then we have to look at teacher coverages at that time.
Thank you.
Now, this is Darren McGregor. Is there a possibility to open up a program for a monitor who gets emergency certified to come into the class? Because the teacher's actually gonna be teaching remotely if I'm, you know what I mean? So can anybody speak to that?
Getting an emergency certificate in Latin?
No.
No, just having a monitor in the room.
The-
Wanted to watch the classroom while the online instruction's going on. Wouldn't necessarily have to be a teacher, just be the person who able to stand in the classroom to watch the kids' behavior. I think a neighboring district is doing a similar program right now.
Normally, we provide a teacher in that situation, and in most cases, although I couldn't quote the specific language of the contract, we're required, I believe, to put a teacher in, in that position. If we're not, we could put a pair in. But yes, we will be having somebody, and they would not have an emergency. So I guess I misunderstood, Mr. McGregor. They would probably not have an emergency certificate in Latin.
Yeah, like, it doesn't have to be in Latin, just a emergency certification from PA. That's, that's all I'm asking.
Go ahead. Right now, we are, we are, Mr. Pichonari and I were just speaking. We're, we're actively searching for people who have bachelor's degrees that would be interested in being a substitute in our buildings and doing, just as Mr. McGregor is speaking of, monitoring students. Maybe they have an expertise in business or, or in sciences or whatever. So if anybody is interested, please don't hesitate to contact Mr. Pichonari at the Bethel Park School District, and he would be happy to help with that process.
And just a note on that, actually, we've been quite successful at that. We, I think, in the last month have approved six with bachelor's degrees, and we've been emergency certing them for day-to-day subs. So it's been working, so get the word out.
That's a positive.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, I'd like to move Item Two, Agreement with the World of Learning Institute.
You already had a second.
We already moved and seconded. Okay, so let's open the voting then.
Voting is open.
Okay, Mr. McGregor?
Okay, now, we have approval to, we have seven items. Approval to extend unpaid leave of absence, two, acceptance of resignations, three, approval of substitutes, four, approval of paid intern, five, appointment of personnel, six, change of assignment, and seven, approval of unpaid leave of absence. I'd like to move one through six at this time.
I need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Turner. And any questions on any of these six items?
I, I do have a quick question on number four, approval of paid intern. We're paying interns as school psychologists. Do they work under the contracted services then, or? So they'd work under, like, Southwood or how?
This, this is Mrs. Sutchen.
We can hear you. Well, we-
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the first current school year that we have a school psychology intern, and they're directly supervised by one of our school psychologists. And it's been a huge assistance, particularly with the COVID and the testing up at the administration building, et cetera. So this is for the following year because this has been successful.
Are the, these are students who are in a, in a program? Is that correct, or?
It's, yes, it's one person, one student. This one is from Edinburgh University. Our current intern right now is from IUP. They're in a Masters plus-thirty program, being what's called an education specialist for the certification in school psychology.
Thank you.
I have a question on number five, the appointment of personnel, specifically the Spanish teacher. Spanish teacher that retired yesterday, I think Mr. Valani, in about thirty seconds after Mr. Pichonari speaks, you can answer this, too. Where are we with this, and when does she start?
For this individual teacher, what will happen now is that they will, what, in regards to the school code, is that they'll put their notice into their current district. Because this is a tenured employee, they, that school district has the option to hold that somebody for sixty days. We've been in contact today with Precision. We're making sure that we can try to find a Spanish substitute. We have not found one yet, but that's been on my daily list to try to find a Spanish substitute. But in regards to how long she's gonna be held at her current district, her district makes that call. We do not make that call.
That's what I thought. Are we, Mr. Valani, I'm guessing we didn't have a Spanish sub in there?
We did not have one today. As Mr. Pichonari said, we're exploring some options. Ultimately, with Mr. Bromen, we wanna get somebody in there as soon as possible. If not, we have to explore different options. Obviously, with what we just did with the Latin teacher would be one, and two, an intern, an alternative route where we can get somebody with a Spanish-certified certificate to get in there and instruct our students. We don't wanna let this go too long, and we don't plan to let it go too long with an interruption to the instruction.
Okay, I would, I would ask for an update on where that teacher is going to be quite quickly, in case this board need, does need to look at the world languages in addition to the Latin we just approved, doing Spanish also. Those students need to continue.
Yeah. Usually, the way it will work, their motion, I can pretty much guarantee how it's gonna read, is that their motion's gonna be up until sixty days of a resignation, and they can release after ten, they can release after forty, and they can hold the whole sixty. And they really don't owe us the date, and I know that's probably the way it's gonna go, unfortunately, but me and Mr. Valani, we're gonna be working hard to find somebody in that room.
And when we comment on it, I believe it's calendar days and not workdays.
Correct, yes, you are correct.
That is calendar days and not workdays, so that does make it a little bit shorter if, if the other holding district would decide to keep them a little bit longer.
Any other questions? Okay, let's vote on one through six then.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Okay, and number seven, last item, is approval of unpaid leave of absence. Any discussion on this?
I need a sec, I need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Christensen. I see no discussion. Will you open it for?
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. I think we'll have to take these two separately.
Yeah, I was gonna do that. I had questions on them, too. So in the finance area, we have two items. First, I'd like to move the purchase of video-sound equipment.
Second? I need a seconded by Mr. Spakusa.
We can take discussion on this.
Discussion, questions? First of all, maybe Mr. Ryer and Mr. McCoslin, can you give us an overview of this?
Yes. So the, this proposal was to upgrade the audio system in this room, and the primary goal is to make it easy to use, reliable, and well-supported. Additionally, it will enable us to push our broadcast out to YouTube very easily. And with an additional piece that I wasn't ready to move tonight, which is a rather, relatively small expense, we would be able to go to Bethel Park TV. we would be able to go to Bethel Park TV, channel 19, or whatever their channel is in the community. And so I think that, you know, one of the challenges that I'm hearing for people in the community who want to watch is that they don't want to have to use Facebook. They don't want to have to install an app. They just want to be able to tune in, turn on, and see the board meeting. And so this would get us there in terms of YouTube. And then, you know, I'd want to come back and do the Bethel Park TV thing pretty shortly thereafter. So.
Is that the second, is that the option, single stream decoder?
That would be the option, which would be the decoder, yes. Is that on, is on on that?
Yes, it's on there.
Okay, so I'm not recommending that we, I, there's a couple of details to work out. But the system itself, for 69,985, is, and the total on the agenda is not to exceed 73. So the actual amount of the, of this room alone is 69,985, so.
And that would, and that will allow us to not rely on Facebook. We can stream to YouTube.
Yes.
And then we, and at a later date, we'll be able to stream to Bethel Park Cable TV also.
Yes.
And it will also take these screens and make them readable.
Well, there'll be much larger screens and projectors that are about two and a half times brighter than the ones that are in here now. So yes, you'll be able to see that well. There'll be laser projectors, which is, you know, it eliminates the incandescent bulb and moves to laser technology, which is where we're trying to go when we buy new projectors for larger spaces.
And we'll be able to solve all of our problems that we've had with audio and echoing and all of that also.
Absolutely.
And this room is used by more than the board?
This room is used probably five or six times a week for decent-sized meetings. And there are a lot of training sessions that are in here for staff as well. And so, you know, teachers will come up here and use this room. And, you know, during COVID, we've employed this system to do the same way we do the board meetings, which again, works, but, you know, it's hard for the people using the room to figure out how to make it work, just like it has been for the school board. So this would eliminate that hurdle to using the room and turning it on and making it work.
And what kind of support is offered by this company?
So the first year and all the equipment is covered 100%. And then second year, all the labor is covered. And the equipment has multiple guarantees on it of varying lengths. So, but all of it's over a year, and much of it's two or three years.
Will any training, will any training be necessary?
Their, training is part of the proposal.
Okay.
Are there any reoccurring payments? Like, are there subscriptions or anything like that that are part of this? Or is this all, you know, upfront costs?
This is all upfront costs.
Okay.
And the other bids were more money or less money, or we?
We had three bids from local AV companies. One of them was almost 100K, and so they weren't competitive at all. And the other two were very close to each other. A little bit different, but a little bit different design, too.
This was the lowest in cost.
I know that we're trying to improve the system here, and I know it's an older system. But spend $73,000, again, that's taxpayer money. I know that there's a lot of frustration with the room and that we've had challenges in the room with audio and everything. I really do understand that. I feel that frustration. I think it's excessive right now. I think maybe we can look at other options, other bids. I mean, that might be the bids that you have right now. I don't know if they'll change or if there's other vendors out there that might provide other options. But I know that other districts right now are using Zoom webinar. And again, it's not going to fix, let's say, some of the things that are going on in here. But that does provide an option for parents to call in, community members to call in. I'm noticing now that there is a number for, I guess, community members to call in. Is that accurate?
It is. And so that's a, that's a different solution, but we can talk about that if you'd like.
Well, the Zoom webinar is interesting because, you know, we're in a pandemic, obviously, right now. And with vaccinations, we're hoping that things will improve. And I know that some districts have already started in-person meetings again. So I just don't know if we need to spend it right now. We've kind of gotten by. I think we might, we should consider kind of waiting on this. I don't think we have to take this vote and obviously push it through. I don't know. I kind of feel like, I would like to learn more about these systems before we actually spend that kind of money. The Zoom webinar, I know that it will allow 3,000 participants for a cost of, it's a contract for, I think, 9,900 for the year. And 9,900 for the year, it just seems like that, you know, with 3,000 participants, that's an option, and then you can wash your hands from it. You're done with it. I know that if you're going to spend $73,000 on this system, there's going to be maintenance, right? And what percent maintenance would you, would you think that we would probably spend to upkeep?
I don't anticipate that we would spend much to upkeep it because it's, you know, this equipment that we're looking at is pretty reliable. I mean, we've had, you know, equipment like this at the high school since it was built in 2011. And there have been a couple of service calls, but we don't pay perpetually on it. So I would say that the amount we would spend over 10 years would probably be less than $5,000.
Again, I think that if we went with maybe a different option, if we did Zoom webinar or something like that, 9,900, maybe right around under $10,000 or so, we can use the rest of the 73,000 or whatever's left, obviously, towards educational resources, which is at the heart of what we do here. I, I know that it is frustrating and there are audio issues, but I'd still rather have that money go to the kids throughout the district, K through 12. I think there's better value there because, again, what are we here for? And the number one reason is to educate. So I understand the need. I do. And I know that we're trying to get as many people to have access. I understand that. But we've been doing it at this point for so long that it's just kind of been normal now. It's kind of like we've accepted this and we're kind of dealing with it. And again, it's $73,000. I think that we just need to take a step back. You know, I don't see the harm, since we've been doing this for so long already, to wait and study this a little bit longer. That's all I'm asking. I think we should study it a little bit longer before we spend $73,000 in taxpayer money.
If I could just speak briefly about the Zoom.
Real quick, Mr. Ryer, is there a time constraint on this offer?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I mean, normally, a vendor will give you 30 days, but, you know, I don't think there's anything. None of this equipment is really highly volatile, like, you know, computer equipment. So I don't think that we're, it would be hard to ask for an extension. But I think it's important for me to clarify that Zoom is just a conferencing platform. It doesn't take care of fixing the audio issues in the room. And so, you know, we take for granted right now the fact that any one of us can speak and be heard by every other one of us, even if you're not in the room. And that's a fairly complex thing, problem to solve, which I solved with the mixer and the, and this WebEx room kit. And so it's a little bit hard to operate because the solution is long on technology and short on user interface, but it, but it works. And so this solution, any of these solutions, really take the room sound problem of being able to hear everybody, no matter where you are, in the room or out of the room, and not get feedback, and solves that problem. And so if you, if you throw all this stuff out of the room and say, okay, we're going to use Zoom, well, then we don't have any way to hear each other in the room. And that creates a real problem that wouldn't even work for the board meetings without some type of a sound reinforcement system that would be able to solve that problem, so.
So last week, we talked just a little bit about, you know, the cost of doing nothing, you know, because we have old equipment here right now. You know, if you look at this over the next, say, three years, if we're investing in new equipment, I expect very little replacement cost over the next three years. But if we do nothing and stay with what we've got, what would we be looking at in terms of, you know, maintenance costs, replacement costs, just to stick with what we have?
Yes, I think that you're probably looking at, at a minimum, new screens, new projectors, all-new table mics, and probably new amplifier and new mixer back there. So we're probably looking somewhere in the neighborhood of $25,000 to $30,000 for those parts and pieces.
So I've been a proponent of upgrading this, making sure we can stream live to BPTV, all of those things since COVID started. But I, I do see Mr. Scousa's point. I mean, we're not through COVID yet, but, I mean, I think we can see the light at the end of the tunnel with the vaccines, with the weather breaking, more outdoors. So a couple of questions that I have before I commit to making this purchase right now at this time. One question I have is, how long would it take to have this installed and up and running?
Yes, so that's a, I think probably we're looking at about a month, five weeks from the time we say go. Of course, we'll have to time that around the board meetings so the room isn't, you know, in a nonusable state during a board meeting.
The second question, I know Mr. Christensen's been a big proponent of a technology blueprint for the long term. Does this constrain us at all if we make this decision now in forming the broader technology blueprint for the district?
It does not because it creates an open interface to the room so that you can use any platform, whether it's WebEx, Google Meets, or even Zoom. And so you could plug any conferencing platform in. It also connects to our existing telephone system. And so, you know, if we get to the point where we're beyond COVID and we just want to have school board members call in instead of doing the old button, the telephone, you just push a button and you bring them on to the board meeting through a telephone call.
Again, I see this being something that takes us well beyond COVID and these circumstances of remote board meetings. I see it as something that just provides access to more community members under more platforms and gives people more of an opportunity to participate in their government. So I am, I am going to go ahead and vote yes for this. But I do understand your point of the tax dollars and the, the concerns that you have.
Are we going to be able to use this old equipment anywhere?
Absolutely. We never throw anything away.
So we're going to recycle the things that we are using, that we are going to get, take out of the room to other places. Okay.
Yeah, I guess one of the comments, Mr. Scousa, I agree with you about spending money. I, I understand that it's difficult to do under circumstance. But for the last, I don't know, 13, 14 months, just getting by isn't good enough. I think we've learned that lesson. So, yeah, we can get by. I agree, we can get by. But beyond COVID, I mean, this, this opens up our board meetings to people who can't physically come to our meetings. It gives us the opportunity to do the training that we all would like to have the district continue. And I brought this up, I believe, last week when we sat here on March 13th and we saw how the state's system failed miserably that day. That just tells me that when you're on the opposite end of not being in this room, how miserable and difficult it is to get anything done or understand what is going on. I will support this, and I think it's much needed.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what it comes down to is it's, you know, Russ, I think you said it exactly right. You know, what we're making, you know, this is an investment, not just for the next six months. We're making a commitment to the community that our meetings are going to be televised, broadcasted from here on out. And, you know, the participation that we've had from the community while we've been in this environment has been fantastic. I mean, look at how many meetings over the last five years I've been on the board where you have three people in the audience, okay? Our participation and the amount of information that, you know, the involvement that we have from the community has actually been fantastic during this time.
Mr. Christensen, another question for you. I know this is long overdue. This room should have been done months ago. But anyway, we are also looking at having to buy a lot of equipment for other, for the room since a lot of our Chromebooks and that have become, you know, aged. But I guess what, my question to you is, we're going to start budget hearings next month. Can we possibly delay that so we can at least see what our technology budget's going to be and where we are? I mean, is it possible to do that for 30 days? Or is it better just to move on this and hope that we made the right decision?
It's this year versus next year, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but you're going to be short this year, so you're making another $75,000 shorter.
Right.
That's all I'm asking.
I mean, it's a good question. I'm not sure if it's for me, but, I mean, I think everybody, everybody here needs to kind of evaluate, you know, is it a good investment?
Yeah, comment on that, but before you do, I don't want to lose Pam's point as well. And anytime there's a big expenditure, I can tell you from my seat, I appreciate this good conversation so much. But I think Ron did point out, the room does not sit idle just because the board is not meeting. And it will allow us to do a lot more things and bring people into meetings when, even when the board is not meeting. We hold a variety of meetings in here during the week. Even just because, let's say, COVID ended tomorrow, there are principals that have IEPs meetings and so forth. They may not be able to come up to the meeting, but they can join us for some important conversation and so forth. So it does have student value and student use. But Doug, where are you with the, the expenditure aspect, David? Are you okay with us going ahead with it now?
I wouldn't have put it on here if I didn't think we could cover it. I mean, with every time you make a purchase, it's unanticipated. It's our job to look at our line items and rearrange our budget. It's an active process that happens every month because you see a list of budget transfers that happen every month. So that's just part of how we operate. We, when things come up that you didn't anticipate, it's our job to go in and say, where can we move things around? Right now, we pull a lot of money from substitutes because we haven't been spending at the level that we've had because you've been remote. So you haven't had a need to have as many substitutes in the classroom. So we look at areas like that and rearrange the funding so that we can get the things we need now. Our situation has changed since you did your budget, you know, in June.
Is this cost capitalized or is it an expense?
It's a capital expenditure, but we're not going to pay for it at our capital, capital reserve. It'll be paid from the general fund.
Okay.
Mr. Ryer, I have a question for you. Is, do we have enough lab technicians, computer lab technicians, that are able to be trained on fixing this system, et cetera?
I don't really anticipate that this is a system that somebody's going to have to work on. And it's going to be easy enough that a, you know, anybody here in this room right now will be able to use it. The systems we have at the high school that were installed in 2011, P401, 402, 403, 315, or 215, 217, 311, 313, the gymnasium projectors and screens that pop down, all those things that were installed with the new high school. And, you know, they've needed some maintenance, but not, not really anything significant given the complexity and capabilities of those systems. So, and really, if something major broke in this, I don't think you'd be looking at a technician, an IT technician fixing it. You have to bring in the sound company that installed it or another sound company to be able to help us with it, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Other comments or questions?
What I would encourage is to find other ways to use it to help make the overall staff more productive also. Because even if you look at these, you know, two-hour delays with, you know, staff development, you know, why make people drive here? You know, why not, you know, broadcast what we do? You know, do more staff development using this equipment? You know, I think there's probably a lot of uses that you could come up with this to help make the overall district more efficient.
Okay.
Voting is open. Motion carries, seven, or six, three.
The next item on the agenda is the. Next item on the agenda is the, I move to approve the capital lease agreement. This is for the IT equipment for, I believe this is?
K to six.
K to six.
Okay, I need a second before we talk about it.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Turner, was Ms. Walsh Turner?
On this one, I had a, just a question on the number of units. I mean, this is just for the lease agreement, but what was, what was the number of units that we're purchasing or leasing?
The numbers have changed a couple of times, but I think right now what we're at is two-hundred-and-thirty-two Windows two-in-one PC laptops and I think a hundred-and-sixty-three or a hundred-and-sixty-six Chromebooks. And then there will be the same number, roughly the same number of external monitors and the same number of computer docs as there are PC laptops.
For whom, Ron? What grades?
So, these will be for teachers, the laptop, Windows laptops are for teachers, classroom teachers in grades K six. And the Chromebooks are for paraprofessionals and instructional aides and nurse aides in grades K through six.
And what is the rationale for buying the teachers the HP, but the paras the Chromebook?
So, the rationale is simply economy and specific need. So, teachers create content and even more so during COVID. And so, the ability to create content on a Chromebook is very limited. And it's much more expanded on a, on a Windows PC laptop. And so, you know, the paras and the instructional aides are primarily consuming content, helping students to, to follow along what their teachers are assigning. And that's what the students themselves have are Chromebooks. And so, you know, I think it's a good tool for the, for the paras and the instructional aides. And I had that discussion with Mrs. Sutton and Dr. Schu, and they're both in agreement with that, with that rationale. And so, that's the reason for the difference. And there is a fairly large cost difference between the PC configuration and the Chromebook configuration.
So, Ms. McCoslin, in this lease agreement, what's the approximate residual value on the lease or what, what is the use that we're paying for over the total cost of the equipment? Do you know, is this, is this like amortized or assume that the, you know, lifetime, the lifetime of the equipment is, say, five years?
This is a three-year lease.
Mm-hmm.
You will be able to trade them in after the three years and then replace them with updated equipment.
But in the, in the value of the lease that we're paying, how much of the full value of the equipment will we be paying over that three years? You know, what's the, I guess, what's the residual or what's the payments that we're making? You know, are we, are we paying for fifty percent of the value of the equipment, seventy percent of the value of the equipment through this lease agreement? What, I'm just trying to understand the lease versus buy.
Well, I'm not quite sure I understand what you're asking me, but the interest you're going to pay over that three-year period is about eleven thousand, five hundred dollars additional rather than buying the equipment outright.
I, I think what he's asking is if we were to buy the equipment outright, what would it cost versus the three-year, the, what we're spending over three years on the lease?
If you bought it outright, it would be three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. If you bought it with the lease, it would be the additional eleven thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. So, you, you know, with the lease, you're paying a total of three-seventy-six, four-sixty-one, but you're spreading that payment over three years, which will be about a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars per year.
And at the end of the lease, do we own that equipment or do we have a trade-in value for a renewal?
Dollar buyout on the lease, you could keep the equipment or you could trade it back in and issue a new lease if you wish to get new equipment.
This is a capital equipment lease, right? It's a capital equipment lease, so we own it at the end for the dollar.
That's correct.
So, at that point, it's up to us either to sell it back or to?
That is correct.
Keep it. This is what, I used to do this, so I understand this one pretty easily.
That is correct. It's a dollar buyout at the end. You choose to keep it and re-task it, you can, or you could trade it back in, get some residual value on the equipment and start a new lease.
So, is the motivation for the lease more around cash flow then?
Yeah, spreading out your payments really, so you're not, not upfront.
It's what we talked about before. If, if you're committed to keeping your equipment up to date and then building a series of leases in over time, it then allows you to level that payments out in your budget over time. You will be able to then have a flat level and then keep your equipment basically updated every three or four years with new equipment. Therefore, you never get in a situation where you're working with twelve-year-old equipment.
So, do we expect any residual value in this equipment if we're paying the full value of the equipment over this three years?
You will have resale value or trade-in value on that equipment at the end of three years, yes. And you could use that against the next lease you issue to reduce the payments.
So, so the cost benefit here is if we buy, we own it, we have to sleep with it for X amount of years. We end up in, you know, as Mr. Ryer has made before, Bethel Park keeps things a long time and they're out of date where every three years we get new equipment.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, to make a simplistic analogy, it's just like a car. If you choose to buy your car outright or make payments on your car and own it, then you're probably going to keep that car longer than the four-year payment plan you had planned to pay it on. But if you lease it, you're constantly, you constantly have a payment, but you constantly have an up-to-date car. So, I mean, it's kind of along those terms of thinking. I mean, that's kind of simplistic.
Right, so we're not trying to patchwork the computers that we have from six or seven years.
Correct. And that's why I think that if you have that commitment, that you say, this is a device we really are committed to having into the future, that's the way education is delivered now, then you need to think about a strategy that's going to commit you to doing that. That's really the question.
The one question I do have is who maintains the equipment over the three-year lease?
We do.
Because it's a capital lease. If it were an operating lease, then it would be the?
Right.
And we have technicians that can work on all of it.
And we have our technicians.
Our techs are Dell certified and we are getting the equipment with ADP three-year warranty. So, you know, whenever something breaks, they, they pick up the phone or fill out a form on a website, submit, you know, diagnose the piece of equipment, submit the parts that need to be replaced. Dell ships the parts, the technicians install them, and the equipment is back up and running with Dell parts, so.
And part of this thinking is that technology is outdated so quickly nowadays that this allows us to stay kind of on a cutting edge?
That's part of it, and I think part of it is by consolidating the type of equipment we're buying, it makes the management and repair of that much easier. You don't have, you know, all these devices, different devices from different years and different manufacturers. You're now consolidating into one or two different types of devices. It makes it much easier for a small tech department to manage those large volume of equipment. The other thing I didn't mention is on the lease, originally it was a two-point-seven-five percent interest payment. We, I negotiated it down, we got it down to one-point-seven percent, so.
Okay.
That's good.
And so, Ms. Dobbs, you brought up the, a great point and so did you, Ms. McCoslin, but this does represent kind of our, our refresh kit for techno, for staff around technology, right? Because we're not going to see something next year where we decide, well, we decide we're going to go all HP laptops for IMS or the high school or something like that. This is our kit, right?
Yes, this is what we're doing for K six and, you know, the plan would be whenever we need to refresh Seven Twelve to do similar. Now, Seven Twelve has Macbooks that were bought two years ago, so they're good for at least next year and, you know, maybe the year after.
Okay, so what's the?
But this represents standardization though, right?
That's, yes.
Because right now it's, it's?
We want to, we want to do this across the entire district for all teaching staff.
Yeah, because right now it's, there's a lot of variation.
That would be our goal with the technology plan and that would be part of our strategy when we build that technology plan.
Consistency.
Yes.
And so, this is going to be implemented, phased in? How are the teachers going to, are they going to still be able to hold on to their precious stuff right now?
So, we know that the teachers are very concerned about having this new technology infused in the middle of an already chaotic year.
Yes.
And, and we don't want to do anything that would create undue hardship. And so, we're saying, look, we're going to go ahead and prepare this and give it to you to start using, but you don't need to quit using your desktop PC or Chromebook yet. We'll let you kind of phase into this until summertime.
Okay.
And then come summer, we're going to take the desktop PC and the Chromebook and this will be your main device. And we'll provide optional training if you're interested in training in the summer so that you can learn how to use the advanced features of that device.
Okay, and then when we take those desktops and we take those Chromebooks back, we're going to give them copies of what is ever on the hard drive so they don't have heart palpitations on that end either, correct?
Well, correct. There shouldn't be much on the hard drives because we've been pointing them to using OneDrive, but yes, if there's something that they stored locally, we'll, we'll help them move it.
Wait a second, OneDrive or Google Drive?
Both.
That's a problem.
Yeah.
You know, we were, we were going down a great path of consolidation and now all of a sudden, it's a scatter.
I, I hear where you're at and so.
Change, change your answer, Ron.
I, I, I wish I could, I wish I could say, yes, we're going to, we're going to eliminate Google Drive, we're going to go to OneDrive, we're going to eliminate OneDrive and go to Google Drive. But the reality is, is that we have three-hundred-and-fifty very different teaching staff who have, who came along with us when we told them we wanted to do one-to-one beginning eight years ago. And back then it was Google. And so, we've, whenever we decided to migrate to Windows ten, we knew that we had to move away from, or not move away from, but enable OneDrive, and so we did. So, yes, would I like to see us migrate everything to OneDrive? Absolutely. Is that something we can do in three months, six months? Probably not. It's going to take a little bit of time.
So, much bigger discussion, but, you know, I know you're getting input from the staff, but number one is our customers and that's the students.
Yes.
And having a consistent learning platform for them is the most important thing. Everything else is secondary.
I agree.
That's only my opinion and I don't think I'm speaking for anybody else, but anyway, topic for probably a much longer discussion than a different time.
Well, that's a topic for the technology committee.
Yeah, exactly.
That is going to be formed.
Yes.
Right, consisting and it's going to be formed under that idea of what consistent learning platform. All right, any other questions about this item? Okay, time to?
Voting is open.
It's not coming up.
It's not.
All right, let me try it again. Come up that time.
Kind of appropriate for technology, right?
I have to reset it.
Up there it is.
It should be open now. Motion carries.
Okay, Ms. Walsh Turner?
Okay, we have the revision of policies for the second of three readings on policy one-oh-three, two-oh-three, two-forty-seven, two-forty-nine, two-fifty-two, three-seventeen-point-two and eight-twenty-four.
I have a question. I was reading through them today and I wasn't quite sure, who is our Title IX official?
Mister, Doctor Jensen.
You are, okay. I thought you were, but I didn't know if we switched it over. Okay, so you're, you're the person responsible in all of these policies.
Right, it was recommended when we did the Title Name Training, and Amy can do this too, that it be somebody outside of HR because HR would have to do, start the investigation process and there's?
Speak up into the, so the public can hear.
There's some legal issues on that, so it was easier at that time even though we were hiring an HR director to make it Mr. Jan Santi, have him work with administration and HR, take on the HR ends of Title IX.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I just want to clarify for the public why it?
It was in?
Yeah, what the difference is and why we did that several months ago. And that was in conjunction with the U.S. Department of Education changes to Title IX.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, we have approval of policy zero-one-one. And then we have approval of policy for the first read, three-zero-three-point-one.
Okay, any comments or questions of, that anyone has? We're not voting on these tonight. We will be voting on these in February. Okay, thank you. Okay, one of our goals in our strategic plan is to create, first of all, a strategic plan committee and start to move forward with that. This particular item is, is descriptive in terms of the, we, we're going to, we want to approve the creation of a district strategic plan committee in accordance with policy nine-oh-five, a citizens ad hoc committee to include all of our stakeholders, both staff, administrators, students, citizens, and any others selected by the district superintendent. And this process will begin within the next month. We're going to have a training for the school board and administrators about this process. So, I need a, I need someone to make the motion and a second.
I move that we develop the strategic plan committee under policy nine-oh-five.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Turner and also it's been seconded by Mr. Nagel. Any questions or comments about this?
I just have a quick question. We've discussed moving forward with building the ad hoc citizens committee for the diversity and inclusion and that may begin before this process. Once that begins, well, that's going to begin before this process, but once we get that committee formed, would we be able to fold that as a subcommittee under this committee or do we have to form another committee?
Yes, I believe that we will be able to, there will be many committees, subcommittees under the strategic plan committee, the overreaching steering committee. And I've already, I was talking to our superintendent and our next superintendent about that and the idea that that, your committee and Ms. Wu's committee will be folded underneath there also because we'll need committees on facilities and curriculum and all kinds of different things under the strategic plan finance. So, yes, it will be. Okay, any other questions about that? Okay, Mr. McCoslin, will you open up the voting?
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Hayes of Hayes Design Group to our meeting to provide us with a presentation about the feasibility and demographic study that his firm has is giving us an update on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just get situated. We're pleased to be here tonight and want to tell the board just generally, we've got, we've done a lot of work in the last two months since being hired and we have a lot of information to go over with you. We want, we want to share what we've learned with the board tonight. That includes talking about the assessments of your existing facilities and their condition. We've also done a major effort in surveying your teaching and administrative staff for their input on the educational curriculum and the buildings. We'd like to review the educational recommendations with the board and then go over with the board key discussion items that will help us as we continue our work in the study. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Tim Reedy. He should be on the line. I'm not sure who's monitoring if he's there. So, Tim, if you are ready to present the assessment of the existing facilities.
Yes, hi. Can everybody hear me?
Hey, great. Generally, uh, just in, in general, thank you for having us tonight. We have found that, for the most part, the buildings are well-maintained, but moving forward, we think that in order to bring the K-8 schools into the twentieth century, a significant amount of work is gonna need to be done in order to update these older buildings. If you're looking at a ten to fifteen-year window, it's gonna take a fair amount of money to get the schools to where they need to go. And so if you, uh, if you have the documents in front of you or available, if you could pull up the document that's labeled the Bethel Park School District Facilities Assessment, um, it's a table that has some pink or red, uh, highlighted, uh, rows in it. And I just wanted to quickly let you know that there's a lot of information here, um, I'm not going to go through it line by line, but, uh, just, this just gives you a, and actually, this is actually a, uh, an abbreviated summary of the findings that we have. We have shared, uh, over forty-five-page document with the school district that goes into even more depth of the facilities assessment for each school, but, um, you can kind of pass over this document if you'd like, um, giving you a sense of some of the major items that we think need to address at each school. If you can now, also turn to the, uh, overview document, the one that's titled Overview of Facilities Assessment. I'll just quickly go through this, because this is even more abbreviated summary of that matrix that we had just shown you. And basically, we wanted to say that we, we've taken the time to go through each school. Um, starting in November, we walked each school with Nick Fierst, with the principals, with the custodians, with John Kramer, um, and we have talked with them about issues that they've discovered during their tenure as principal or as head custodian. Um, we've gone through all of the major building systems, mechanical, electrical plumbing, with John Kramer, just to ensure that we're covering all of our bases with what needs to be fixed or, or the age or the, uh, condition of each of those systems. And in general, the big items that we want to focus on are ADA accessibility. While, uh, there's an attempt at accessibility in a lot of the schools, many of them do not, or none of them actually can meet the current ADA code, and this is something we would recommend updating, uh, for the future. Some of the finishes need replaced, although these have been periodically replaced by Nick Fierst, plumbing systems, electrical, a few, again, a few of these things have been replaced, lighting has been replaced in a few schools, um, but in general, uh, there are still a lot of non-code compliant items with regards to electrical and plumbing. None of the schools have sprinklers, this is something that we would recommend in any new school, um, and so we would recommend it again to bring these schools up into the twenty-first century. Site work and paving, there's a significant amount of work ne- needs to be done at several of the schools. And just in general, the HVAC systems, going all the way down to the bottom, uh, other than those, that were, systems that were replaced at Neil Armstrong and at George Washington, the majority of the HVAC systems in their entirety need to be replaced at the other schools. They're just, they, they were, uh, replaced, many of them during the two thousand and six renovations, or even earlier, um, in the early nineteen nineties, um, and in most cases, they're past their usable life. That's, that's the very quick summary of, of an enormous amount of information that, uh, we've given to the school district in terms of the assessing the K-8 school facilities.
And I would say in, in summary, you know, you've got well-maintained buildings, but those buildings, you know, are seventy years old, uh, up to forty years old, your early, your, in the K-8 buildings, your youngest building is forty-plus years in terms of the structure. You have renovated those, uh, major renovations happened, uh, primarily in the, in the late nineteen nineties, um, and then periodic renovations, uh, have occurred since then. So, uh, in, in total, your K-8 buildings are well-maintained, they're older, most of the major systems and most of the buildings are older, uh, and it'll take significant monies to bring them up, uh, to both code and also educational requirements, and, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. What I wanted to talk about next is just a demographic update, uh, for the board. Our demographer, Shelby Stuman, um, is hard at work, um, he was delayed getting out of the gates, uh, because he actually had to file a Freedom of Information Act with Bethel Park Municipality. They've been very cooperative, but they just wanted to go through that formality for their own records, so that delayed some time. What I can tell you at, at this juncture with demographics is that, um, you will likely not see any grade increases over the next ten years in, in demographics. You are a mature community, uh, most of the available land able to be developed has been developed, um, there are some smaller developments still occurring in Bethel Park. You ha- you have reached the end of your dip, uh, you had a dip that, uh, started in basically the late nineties, uh, and continued on through about two thousand and five up to two thousand and ten, and then that's starting to correct itself. Uh, when Shelby does further work, he's going to fine-tune it exactly where you are in terms of the various national and regional demographic waves that happened, and also how it's affecting your community. But what we can say with some confidence at this point is you are not going to see a large increase over the next ten years. You're not likely to see a decrease, you have in some ways bottomed out as a community, um, in terms of the, 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 uh, lessening of enrollment, but you're not going to see a, a large increase, uh, in the next ten years. And, 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 just to put some numbers to it, right now, you're in the four thousand and fifty student total student population, uh, you're, you're, you're not likely in the next ten years to get beyond four thousand three hundred if, if you get to that point. So again, fairly stable enrollment over the next ten years to keep in mind. What we'd like to do right now is talk about the process and the survey results, um, and for that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Smith, who's with us remotely.
Hello, everyone. Everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, so as Kevin said, we want to talk a little bit about the programming, um, and survey results. So in late November, we created a thorough survey with questions ranging from anywhere from how the buildings currently support the educational curriculum to how teachers and staff view the future needs to best deliver a twenty-first century learning experience at the schools. We then distributed the surveys to all the teachers and school staff at seven K-8 schools, and we received a great deal of feedback from these surveys. Uh, we gathered, gathered the key points and, and themes from those discussions, and then we, or from those surveys, and then we met with each principal and teacher volunteers from each of the buildings to discuss, discuss the main issues brought up in the surveys. So we had, we had seven, seven meetings with the, the teachers and school staff from each of the buildings, we also met, met individually with Special Education Department to talk about special, special education as a whole in the district. You know, from the surveys and from the follow-up meetings, we gathered a lot of good information. The document titled Overview of Programming Survey Results and Meetings with, with Staff summarizes the key issues and themes that were identified throughout that process. As you can see in the document, certain deficiencies and desired improvements related to equity at the elementary level were identified, STEAM education, uh, concerns, special education, and large group instruction were a few of the topics that we discussed in length during those meetings, as well as they showed up, uh, frequently in the survey results. Uh, we met, we, we then met with the district admin multiple times to discuss those items, and, uh, you know, the information that you see on this document, the Overview of Programming Results, was what we used to begin to develop the educational, our recommendations for an educational building program at the K-8 level. And, uh, we can go to the next, we can go to the next, uh, the next document, talk a little bit about these recommendations for the K-8 educational building program. So, if you have that, make sure you have that document in front of you, the Recommendations for K-8 Educational Building Program. As we developed these recommendations, we were meeting with our educational curriculum consultant, Dr. John DeSanti, who is a retired superintendent, school administr- administrator, consultant, as well as a professor, to go through these recommendations and, and vet them. Uh, one of the things we believe is that the educational curriculum should drive the education pedagogy. The education pedagogy should drive the outcomes desired for the students for K-12, and then those desired outcomes should drive the spaces that are needed for each building. So with that being said, I want to talk, talk a little bit about each of these recommendations and get some feedback from the, on the recommendations listed here. You know, uh, starting with the general recommendations at the top of the page, um, consider a preference to have no less than three grades in a building, so that students are not arriving one year and possibly departing the next. Keep seventh and eighth graders on the same site as the high school, the staff can be shared between the building, and this also allows the middle school students to take advantage of classes at the high school. And then for all the options that we're going to eventually develop, the following classroom students, student sizes will be utilized, twenty-three to thirty at the K-2 level, twenty-five to thirty at the, uh, grades three to five level, twenty-eight to thirty at the grade six to eight level. And then please note, all, all the, all the classrooms will be sized to accommodate up to a maximum thirty students.
Pam, can we stop him right here?
Yes.
Because that recommendation needs to change. Our CBA does not allow for that amount of students in a classroom.
Okay. Yes.
I would encourage you to read the seventy-seven pages of the CBA.
Sure.
Um, because that, those numbers, our budget would be going through the roof with the amount we would have to pay for extra students in each one of those classrooms.
Yeah, let, let me explain that. So, we're, we're looking at this point, yeah, we're, we're, we're looking at that as not a recommendation for what you teach or how you use the classroom, we're looking at as the basis by which we can develop recommendations for master plan options, so that you have the possibility in a classroom of having thirty. Your CDA would have to be negotiated over time to match what you intend to do there. So, we're, we're not looking at it from the standpoint of we're recommending you put thirty students, we're simply saying, we would recommend that you design a classroom so if you needed to put thirty, you could, and that obviously would have to be worked out through your CDA and through negotiations, and that's an administrative issue, but we wouldn't recommend not giving you that possibility, um, in order to not limit your flexibility in how you utilize your buildings in the future. So the, the one question we really want the board, if we can get some feedback from board members here tonight, is the K-2 recommendation, because there are some proponents saying that twenty kids in a classroom, uh, in the K-2 would be recommended, and, you know, we're, we're, we're kind of just putting that number up there for discussion at twenty-three to thirty. So, again, and, and again, what we're going to be using this information for is not to set your policy. It will not be in the study that we're recommending policy for the school district, we're looking at what we need from a space planning standpoint. So, what we want to ask the board is, what is your comments and input as to the size of classrooms you would prefer to see designed around?
Um, Mr. Hayes, I don't think we're there yet. We haven't created our strategic plan yet.
Okay.
So these are only just your recommendations or your observations, and I just want the public to realize, this is not where, we haven't, we're, we're not here yet. What we're, what, what we need is, we need to know, are our, we, we have a declining population. In your report, you stated that, um, uh, IMS has about half the number of students in it as, as it has a capacity.
Right.
So that means that there's a lot of that building that is empty, according to the way you stated it.
In terms of spatialization, yes.
Right, and so I think that's one of our primary concerns is, or questions, is how are the spaces that we currently have being used, and is it possible that we are under util- under utilizing areas where we might be able to combine some classes like you have listed here? But until we know what those numbers are, we can't even begin, and until we have our strategic plan to talk about, you know, where we're going in terms of our educational structure-
Mm-hmm.
You know, we haven't had those conversations yet.
Okay.
So, we're basically interested in the facilities and the capacity in the facilities, and are they being utilized or underutilized? And how much are each of these elementary buildings costing us to keep them open versus what we might save if we would close one, if we have the capacity within the rest of the buildings to absorb the students?
Mm-hmm.
So, we're not looking this year to do any of those renovations that you're talking about.
Right, no.
That's, and I, and I heard what your coworker said, you know, our five to ten-year plan, and we are looking to create a five to ten-year plan, but-
Right.
Immediately, we really just, um, this information is valuable, but in addition to that, we, we, we want to know the capacity in each of the elementary schools, how, how ma- is that capacity at full, or is there a lot of room?
Sure.
And, I mean, I like the idea that, you know, we can re-utilize some of the spaces in a better way, like the library as a teen, as a steam room-
Mm-hmm.
-and different things like that. But also, what is the cost of running each of those buildings, and how much-
Right.
-cost savings would we see in the near future if we would close one of those buildings? So that's-
Yep.
That's, I think, I think that's where we have all been talking and having our discussions about what we need from your company, right?
Yeah, so, so maybe there was some kind of a breakdown in communications here, but just like Mrs. Dobos is saying, in this, this particular presentation, what we were looking for is the short-term, uh, bridge recommendations of how we get through with the conditions of our facilities, with the demographics we have, with the utilization of our buildings, as a short-term bridge as we form the long-term strategic plan, and then further down the line, we get into this long-term stuff. Uh, I also have several other concerns with this report, to be honest.
Sure, sure.
First of all, what I see in this report, I see, maybe I'm mistaken, but I see no reason that our own internal staff couldn't have provided this information. For instance, you know, on the educational aspect, you did surveys and then consolidated the results of the surveys. Our administrators could have done that for us. As far as the facilities assessments, I get most of this information in a write-to-no request a year and a half ago. You know, we, we know this stuff, so, I, I guess my concern is, what are we paying you for?
Sure, sure. Yeah, to answer, you know, briefly the two comments, um, your staff could not have done what we did. The, the ability to, the, the survey expertise that we brought and the ability to gather that information, analyze it, compile it, et cetera, uh, was a huge amount of work. Um, and, and, uh, if you did have, you know, five people who could work full-time on it the, the way we did, you, you might have been able to do it, um, but you also didn't have the expertise in terms of developing the survey instrument as well. And in terms of the assessment, uh, again, I, I beg to differ, if you look at the detailed narratives that we turned over to, uh, the district, uh, and, and again, if you'd like, if you'd like, you know, that the staff can share that with all board members, it's, it's a huge amount of information, and that was compiled by our team and our consultants, and it was not something you already had, because we asked for all the information when we started the study, and, and we've added a lot, a lot of more information, you know, based on our assessment. So, uh, that, that is not the case, that, you know, it, you already had the information. Now that said, uh, in terms of the, the idea of bridging, w- we are getting to that, that will be a part of the study. That will be a part of the study. But what we're looking at tonight is needing some input from the board as to parameters upon which we can base master plan options. So the idea of developing the master plan options is to get to the point where we have a consensus master plan developed. And then from that, look to design and lay out, how do you get there? How can you afford to implement the master plan year by year by year? And that will include the bridge, the phrase you used, Ken, was bridge planning to what do we do now so we can keep the buildings as they need to be done and not spend a penny more than we have to? Because you don't want to spend good money after bad if changes are going to happen to the facilities later on in the master plan. So what we're doing now is laying the foundation, literally, for the plans that we'll develop. And once we have a master plan, the bridge comes into play. As far as capacity, we can certainly talk about that tonight. I mean, your IMS building, you have much more space than you're utilizing. The space utilization is low in some areas of the building. Meaning that there are some teachers that are just there because the space is available. But they could certainly be consolidated in terms of there is enough room in the school to bring in an additional grade if you wanted to do that. And that is, that would be one of the options that we would develop in looking at the master plans, as a, for instance. Currently, your grade schools together have sufficient capacity. Again, depending on, that's why we came back to the question, what is the board's direction as to what we base our decisions on capacity on? That goes back to how many kids do you want in a classroom? In terms of what would your preferred amount of kids be? You know, and that's always plus or minus, depending on the population of the school and the like. But what would your target amount of kids in a classroom? Because that, because based on that, we can then tell you, this is how many classrooms you need in a building, and this is what your extra capacity is.
Well, I mean, to answer your question, I would say to, at this point in time, not go higher than what we have in the CBA.
Which is, you know.
Or to add three, you know, the thirty figure could be six feet apart.
Right, I mean, here's my thing. A lot of us have, over the last, a lot of us on this board over the last year and a half have talked K to four, K to five, K to three especially, one to twenty. So, one to twenty.
And the other thing is that, as a board, we have talked in public about parity of size. That's also something that is important to us, that we, at this point, have kindergarten classes of fourteen in one school and twenty-some in another school. So we have, and again, this is part of the long-range strategic planning, not a short-term, I mean, if we could make it a short-term, but we're very concerned about parity in class size and also collaboration in terms of curriculum with grade levels. So the idea of consolidating elementary schools, I think, is on the horizon. Not for next year, like in terms of major changes.
Again, I'll repeat that, the goal of the study is going to be to develop a master plan. So it's not going to be, this is going to be implemented in one year. It will not be possible for you to do that. So it will be a multiple-year master plan. And then there will be pieces each year that you can move along the path to making the master plan a reality.
Can I ask a question or make a comment? I'm not sure which it is at this point, I'm a little overwhelmed by my own thoughts. If we're going to just stay in the same model we are right now, then, I mean, the excess capacity in one building doesn't do us any good. So I guess, maybe to Kevin's point, are we willing to look at different options? Are we going to just stay K through, you know, I mean, or how are we doing that? And that's, I guess, where my confusion is.
Mine also, honestly, I'm kind of confused by how you're listing your recommendations. How will you position your recommendations? What I was expecting is that through this process, you probably have three big ideas.
Hey, whoever's talking, I can't hear you.
Okay, how about now?
Now.
What I was expecting through this is that we would, you know, come to the point of somehow kind of having three big ideas that take us in different directions. And then we evaluate, you know, cost benefits, academic benefits, things like that. Right now, I mean, this is just my perception, and maybe it would benefit if, and maybe it's going to have to be the next meeting. But if you can walk us through the process to help us see the end game that you vision from a process standpoint. Because right now, I see, you know, grade Cs on all of our buildings, have no idea what it's going to cost, have no idea if it's worth repairing them.
There were two Ds.
What's that?
There were two Ds.
Two Ds, yeah. And then I see a recommendation that kind of just keeps us down the same path we're on. So honestly, I'm very disappointed, okay? I mean, I don't know how we can make recommendations right now, because we don't even know what path that we want to go down. We don't have any big idea options to make trade-offs, so I don't even know why we're here.
In the assessment, we weren't even given a, like, a prioritized list of what needs addressed?
Those are in the narratives. There is a prioritize loose within that. So again, I think, again, this is the first time we've met with the board. So it's helpful to, again, talk to each other and gear our expectations. To give you an idea where we're going is, what we're talking about and some of the input we need from you tonight is going to help us determine what recommendations the board is willing to consider. We are going to come back to you with probably sixteen or seventeen master plan options. They're not always, they're not all going to be different direct paths. There'll be variations on a theme. But again, we, you know, we can talk about it. You're going to cover a spectrum of possibilities. The public will demand to know, can we keep all of our existing elementary schools, which we like, they're small neighborhoods, elementary schools? Can we keep those? And we, and so one option will be, in order to develop equity, in order to develop some better level loading, in order to better utilize your existing facilities, here's a recommendation for a master plan. We'll lay it out with regards to what each school is going to need, what the cost of that's going to need to be, and what the overall total budget for that master plan option would be. And that's a baseline, because the public simply will demand it in terms of, we at least need, want to know why, if you're going to move away from your existing system, why are you going to do that? So that's going to be one. Another option will be, and that's what we want to ask the board tonight, you know, what is the board's appetite? What is the board's tolerance? Do you, are you willing to consider closing a school, one of the elementary schools? It's not an easy thing to do. So, I mean, that would be one issue. The other would be, would you be willing to close all of them and consolidate? Because there is an issue of equity and inequity at your elementary schools right now. Both in terms of student loading, there is not level loading, as Mrs. Dobos has mentioned. You have some schools where you have very small student-teacher ratios. You have other schools with very high student ratios. So there isn't level loading across your district. There is also not an equity of opportunity. And that's what we would really say equity would be, is, are you providing the opportunity for all of your students to succeed in your schools? Depending on what their needs are. Because equity is not, does not mean equal, it means equal opportunity. So some students may need in your district more resources, more support to have the same opportunity of success than other students. So I would like, I mean, we would like some feedback tonight, and I think the board should talk among yourselves, you know, is there a consensus on the board that you are comfortable looking at a master plan that would close an elementary school?
Well, I think, maybe we should state it in a different way. I think you articulated it with everything that you need to know. We want to provide equity, we want to acquire high-quality education, and the other one is, we want to do it cost-effectively. I don't know if there's any other input you need from us. Give us options.
I actually think there is one thing. I mean, are we going to stick with the system that we currently have, you know, K through?
I think we're willing to entertain.
But Kevin, am I wrong? You need some idea of where.
I know it's obvious to you, it's not obvious to us. I'm asking for that consensus on the board's part. Do you have it?
I think we're looking to, as Mr. Christensen said, be cost-effective in the short term, but to have a vision for educational restructuring in the long term. Which could encompass closing a building, and it could encompass moving grades to other buildings, and so forth and so on. I think we are open to multiple scenarios. But we need costs, we need facility capacity, we need numbers.
We need, yeah, we need to know, you know, I'm looking at, you're telling me I'm staying neutral. I don't have my dip anymore. But what's that number? How many kindergarten kids am I looking at coming in next year? We had, again, non-equals. We have four kindergarten classes at this building, but we only have two here and three here. That's the number-one thing. The other thing that these parents are going to want to know is, in the decision-making process, how long does my child sit on a bus? And that is critical. So that is something I'm not seeing in here, and it needs, we need to be able to answer that question.
We need to come up with some priorities, though. And, you know, the thing that, the things that are on the top of the list in my mind are the equity across, you know, the class sizes and things. We hear about that a lot. That was, that's a hot topic last year. I would say that, you know, as we look across scores, PSSA scores in Keystone, we want to have, you know, equal opportunity performance across the classrooms. And we want to do it cost-effectively. I mean, in my mind, you know, I know busing's an issue, but I think it's way down the list, okay? I mean, if we have a choice of having, you know, a plan that gives us a better ability to provide equal class sizes, better, you know, academic performance, I mean, I would say that, I grew up in Minnesota, I rode the bus for an hour each way, okay?
Parents won't do that here.
One of the things that's been striking is, again, is, would availability of space, it was set here tonight, IMS has room. Some of us can remember when IMS was six, seven, eight. We went through that system. I'm not saying that's what we're going to be doing, I'm just saying, but that's the one that cost-effect in this, using that space to the maximum of its ability. Keeping class sizes down and providing those other issues. But that's also a domino effect, what that takes us from there. And again, Russ said it, we've all kind of said, what structure are we going to present for education, meeting all those other goals? I don't think we've come and expressed that to them. Again, they do now, they hear it now, there's no doubt about it now, and they can go back and regroup. But we get our feel in the board, because we really never, I know, we have a lot of things on our table, we really never go out to that. But if one step is moved, it's going to have a domino effect. And it will meet some of the goals that we need to have, especially when we have financial concerns coming up. Maximizing the space of our schools.
With all due respect, we did give, we did give direction. For this meeting, we were looking for an assessment of our facilities, the conditions they were in, the cost, and whether or not we, there were any way to mitigate those costs in the short term while we gathered this information to provide recommendations for the long term as we build the strategic plan. That's the direction we were, that I think we all agreed on giving, and I don't think we got it tonight.
So be it, Ken, I'm not disputing that aspect of it, but we need to go forward with this, and what direction are we going?
And I think we need to think too about, we need to know, like, what the properties, like, I'm sure a lot of you in here don't even know which schools have the most property, property to be developed. I mean, things like that, and where on our locations, do we even want to consider certain locations, you know, to be, because some of them have terrible parking, they're not located, so there's a lot of things to consider when we're looking at this whole plan.
I mean, maybe to answer your question, Kevin, you want to come up with a list of things that, like, are off the table? I mean, I can't think of anything that's off the table, as long as they are viable solutions that help us improve academic performance, equal class sizes, and help us reduce our cost per student. You know, I can't think of anything that's just, you know, like, I don't know, taboo or what, I mean, it's off the table. I'd consider anything. Anybody have any that are just like those that are your, you know, sacred cows that you don't want to touch?
In agreement, Barry, that's our three big goals we're looking at there. How we get to that point is what we're asking now. But I think we're all in agreement, that's our three big issues or concerns as we move forward with this feasibility study.
Right, because we are, we do have a decreasing enrollment, and we're not utilizing our buildings efficiently. And so if we move, as you said, sixth grade to IMS, then we need to move an elementary grade level up to Neil Armstrong. And then that puts fewer students in our buildings.
But it's more than that, it's more, I mean, you could do a K-two building also, right? I mean, that's, I guess that's where I feel the disconnect is. There are so many options we could give him that he could give us a plan that was like five hundred pages. We need to narrow that a little bit. I mean, we, we're still all over the board right now.
So Russ, Barry, the three of us were on the committee when we were interviewing and hiring. I think the conversation we're having right now, we had with all of the candidates, saying what our priorities were, what our goals were, what our challenges were. So with all due respect, I think this isn't a failure of the board or the administration in conveying this. This is a failure of Hayes' design group of hearing what we were saying when we hired them.
No, I, again, I think, just to help everybody, there was no failure of not understanding, Ken. We're in the middle of the process. We, the process will go forward and identify, what we're looking for is, there is a need for us, the board, and the administration to continue to dialogue through the process. It's not like you just talk to us, hire us, and we go away for four months and come back with all the answers. It's an iterative process. All we're saying, tonight, we're bringing back information, we think it's very good information. We are moving forward to the master plan options, and we already have an outline of what those are. Some of the issues that we brought to you tonight is just a confirmation that these are options you are willing to hear about. So we appreciate the feedback tonight. And again, there's not really a need to regroup, we're just going to continue on. And we are going to develop more details for each of the options, including, you know, what the consequences are going to be from a financial standpoint, what the consequences are going to be in those options for what your, you know, operating costs and how those are going to be affected by each of the options. And of course, you know, is there going to be opportunities for savings in staffing? Because as we said when we interviewed, you know, you cannot save the money that the board needs to save to meet your budget shortfall without either raising taxes or reducing staffing. Because eighty percent of your budget is staffing and benefits. So, you know, you're not going to do it by saving energy, you're going to do it by saving staffing. And again, that doesn't mean at all, because again, the master plan will be a long-term process. You know, most, in other districts that we've worked in, there's been no layoffs or no cutbacks of staffing. It's usually done by attrition. And again, you'll have plenty of opportunity to do that in this district. And you simply, you know, would be able to recalibrate your staffing as people retire.
Just for the next time we meet, just remember that our focus right now, this year, is short-term. Yes, we are creating a strategic plan. Yes, we are creating a strategic plan, and we are moving into the long term. But we are looking at next year, and that is as short-term as I can make it clear to you, that we want short-term right now, which seems, because we have such, we have room in buildings, so we want some short-term, knowing that we want to restructure long-term.
Right, Mrs. Dobis.
Is that accurate? Yeah, I mean, like, how many, how many? Right. You gave us the information we needed for IMS, that, you know, that is half the capacity. And, you know, being an alum of this school district, I went six to eight at IMS, okay? And elementary school was K to five. So, what's that option? Are our buildings at capacity? Do we need to, gosh, help that word, redi, is there a redistrict in our future? Is that a long-term goal? Is that a short-term goal? Where do our buildings fit into that plan?
Right.
Those are things that I think we need to know from you. You gave us the information on NAMs, I think we were, or on IMS, I think we were a little bit expecting, if some of us have been in this district a long time. But where is the capacity at NAMs? Jeez, that building's been renovated several times over. Where are we with classrooms? You know, we now have three floors in that building. When NAMs became an elementary school back in ninety-whatever, ninety-three, ninety-four, we were only using two floors. So, what is the capacity of that building? What is the capacity of our larger elementary schools? What, you know, do we have to do K to two? Could we keep them K to five? Those are the things that we need to know from you before we can do a strategic plan to set the goal that way.
Sure.
We have no idea.
I would say that, you know, some of, some of those things are maybe.
I know, getting into the weeds a little bit.
Lead up to the solution in the end. I mean, I'm only speaking for myself, but I would like to see, you know, data-based options that get back to those, in my mind, there's three things. It's, you know, the, you know, what helps us develop a better academic environment, equal class sizes, and a lower cost per student, you know? And we rank the different options that we have based on those.
Yep.
You know, a lot of the other things are how you get there.
Right, right. And, again, I think that our bias, if there's a bias involved, is that we want to try not to spend good money after bad. So, the short-term solutions are best implemented when they're a part of a long-term master plan.
Yeah, and that's the path, you know, of how you get there.
Right.
And, again, generally speaking, we identify what short-term needs are. We identify a master plan that develops the consensus of the board.
The direction.
The direction that you want to go in. And then we look at, how do you integrate the short-term needs with that master plan and move forward in your first steps, which would be your steps in the next year? So, that's how it works. It does work well. And, again, I think we're on the path to get there. So, our hope would be to meet with you again next month, and I'm going to say, make the request again, if possible, I think a separate meeting where we're going to need at least an hour, if not ninety minutes, to go over options that we'll bring to you, because there'll be a lot of information in those options.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hays.
Sure, thank you.
Just one, you know, one other question, the next time we meet. You know, today, we have some data, but they're not constructed in a way to make us, help make any decisions, okay? So, if you're asking us to evaluate options, we do need the data to help us. You know, the, you went through and ranked, you know, rated the different buildings.
Yes.
Interesting information, but it's not actionable from our standpoint, because we don't know what the costs are. So, as you're putting together data, you have to present it in a way that's actionable also, that you can actually make decisions off of, okay?
Understood, yes. And, again, for any board member who's interested, I would, and, again, I'm just going to ask the administration, if you can then go ahead and send the narratives out to the board members. A lot of information, but some of you want, you know, seem to be interested in that level of detail. I think you'll find some of the information you're looking for in there. And we are going to be establishing costs for your short-term, medium-term, and long-term maintenance needs in each of the buildings. So, very good.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Cam, we have no public comments that have written in. I don't know. Do we have any comments coming in through the phone?
No.
All right. We don't have any more public comments. I just want to remind the board members to stay in the meeting. We have to talk about a few other things after the meeting. So, can you keep it open?
Sure, I'll leave your last public here.
Okay, all right. Any other board comments tonight? We didn't do, I didn't do committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports?
I had a quick one here, just to let everybody know that, you know, Steel Center is adjusting their schedules. As the schools come on board and change their mode of learning, they are adjusting their schedules, too. So, just keep posted to your school's individual schedule, so you know that that's happening. The other thing is that the AIU has been working with all the other AIUs, trying to get the vaccines here as soon as possible, but it doesn't look until, like, they'll be here before March, April, possibly. But they are working feverishly to get them to all the forty-two school districts. So, just to let you know, they're keeping on top of that. The other thing is that they are in the process of doing strategic planning. We've been doing it for about four months now. Looks like we will be finished by June or July. When we are finished, they are going to be having people who will go out to the different districts and help them with their strategic plans. So, that's a new service they're going to offer. They'll be able to help school districts with their strategic planning. Also, they will be able to provide services for HR, business management positions. Their direction is going to include these additional services for all forty-two school districts, whoever wants to participate. You know, like, maybe if you need an interim person in one of those positions, or long-term. They've had great success with a couple of the school districts already, and so, we know that it works well. The other thing is that they also will, the Steel Center has been an entity of AIU, more like, worked in joint partnership. We started a year ago to go on our own, and we've just about completed that process, in which we'll be managing our own school district, or our own school entity. So, that was a big step for us, because all these years since it was formed, it was always like, in joint operation with the AIU, so now we're, become our own. So, that's kind of good news. And they will have a new, their new Vet Tech program will be starting this September, and a couple of the health professions will also be included in their new curriculum. So, we're moving forward. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel?
I just want to thank everybody who took the time to fill out the diversity and inclusion surveys. I want to reiterate that diversity and inclusion means creating a district that's welcoming, inviting, and supportive of everybody. I know there were some people concerned with that, with the survey. I just want to reiterate, this is inclusive, not exclusive. I also want to reiterate, we were in the information gathering process. As this week moves forward, we're going to meet and start discussing forming the broader committees to involve all stakeholders, to go over that information, start filtering it down, and trying to think about where we are and where we can go. So, I'm really excited to start that next phase. As I said, we're just meeting to discuss how we're going to form those committees, and then we're going to get the ball rolling on that. So, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything, Dr. Imperio?
No.
No? Well, I just, I just want to encourage you that we have now the telephone system in the future, if you'd like to call in and state your comments as we're, as we're moving through this. And with our new, with our approval tonight, we should be able to, within two months at least, be able to broadcast to both YouTube and to, and possibly Bethel Park TV, so that the limited audience, those who are limited by not being on Facebook can now, will then be able to view, view our meetings and participate in them also. And I know that people are disappointed that we aren't, we don't have the plan tonight for reopening specifically, but as we stated, the positivity numbers are still pretty high. But we're hoping that by February, that we will have a robust plan for re-entering and reopening our schools, more so than in the hybrid plan. With that, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Nagel, seconded by Mr. Christensen. Thank you.